All right, very good. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, 7:03 PM. And before we call the meeting to order, I'm going to be a little bit redundant here with what Director Bennerott talked to you about, and that is to let you all know, and I think many of you do know, that we've been running these meetings post-COVID on a hybrid basis, also during COVID, and sometimes remote during COVID entirely. So if you happen to be watching the meeting on cable TV or at edinamn.gov live meetings or on Facebook, and you want to participate in community comment and the public hearing, there's one public hearing tonight, I'm going to talk about that momentarily. But you can call into the city council at 786-496-5601. The number's on the screen. Punch in the conference PIN number, press the pound sign, and then press star one to speak to an operator, and Director Bennerott will bring you into the council. If you're calling in regarding community comment, remember that you cannot talk to the council about something that's on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. And then the public hearing matter we have has been requested for a postponement. Staff's recommending postponement on that. So I think, from a practical standpoint, the only opportunity you'll have to call in tonight is during community comment and raise an issue with the council on a matter that's of concern to you, as I said, that's not otherwise on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order, and let's do roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. Thanks to all. Next is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Next matter is approval of the meeting agenda. Is there anyone on the council or staff that wishes to modify the meeting agenda? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown?
So moved.
Second.
Member Staunton moves. Member Pierce seconds the approval of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the motion of approving the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are back at community comment. So the first thing we're going to do is see if anyone in the audience wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them or that's not on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. And then we'll go to folks who might be tuning in from the virtual world. So let's go first to anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the council about a matter they're concerned about. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody coming forward, not hearing anything. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody online? Again, folks, I'm going to have them put that number up on the screen, and we'll wait a minute or so. There's the phone number, the conference PIN number. Press star one to speak to an operator. That operator will get you to Director Bennerott, who will get you into the council.
I don't have anyone on the line just yet. As you mentioned, it would be a good idea to wait about a minute before we move on because there is a slight delay in the broadcast. My clock shows that it's 7:04. I will come back to you in about 60 seconds or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
All right, very good. Thank you.
I have no callers. I think it would be okay for you to move ahead.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. As is our practice and as is shown on the agenda, the city manager responds to community comments that were made at the prior meeting. Manager Neal, anything to respond to?
Yes, Your Honor, we have one person for community comment, Ruth Ann Metzger. She wanted to know that she appreciated the ability to mow her lawn for the first time in two years. And she also had some questions about the city's interactions with the railroad and in regards to finishing some key spots in the Melody Lake project. Director Milner told the group and Ruth Ann that he and his team were meeting with the railroad, I think, this past week. And so there would be some, there's likely some updates that will be coming forward, and he would update that on our Better Together site for anyone to see.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Manager Neal, anything you wanted to add, Director Milner, at this point in time? Okay, very good. Next matter on the agenda is the consent agenda items. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
So moved.
Second.
Member Anderson moves. Member Jackson seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now, we do this not with any predictability, but it is really a delight when we get a chance to do it. And under the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, which is next, tonight we're going to do a hometown heroes recognition. Last meeting, we had some photographic awards that we're able to hand out to people in our community, and Director Bennerott, Jennifer Bennerott, our communications director, is going to introduce a couple of hometown heroes, and we're going to celebrate them this evening. So Director Bennerott.
Thank you very much. I was hoping to recognize two heroes tonight, but I only see one in the audience. So I'll proceed with the first one, and if you see her walk in, give me like the signal, okay?
All right.
All right, so as we all know, Edina is made up of a lot of wonderful people who pride theirs themselves in making Edina a great place for living, learning, raising families, and doing business. For more than a decade, we've honored some of them as hometown heroes, writing stories about them for our website and our social media accounts. This year, we've been trying to honor them here at your meetings, too. Tonight, I'd like to honor, you to honor, at least one of them who have been champions for sustainability. Russell Stanton won a blue ribbon at this year's Minnesota State Fair for a 2.74-pound German giant tomato he grew in his backyard garden. For context, the average tomato weighs in at just four to seven ounces. His tomato was almost three pounds. So in addition to good seed, every gardener needs to have lots of sun, water, and good soil to grow something like this tomato. Good soil can be tricky, but Russ has a secret weapon, Edina's compost. Since the city of Edina's organics recycling program began in 2020, more than 2,400 tons of food waste have been diverted from landfills. It has been repurposed as this nutrient-rich compost, much of which finds its way back here in gardens and flower beds just like Russ's. Russ first used the city's compost on a host bed last fall. Appreciating the results, he tried it again this year in his vegetable garden and had these amazing results. So the city of Edina thanks Russ Stanton for being an early champion of our organics recycling program and for being a champion at the Minnesota State Fair.
All right, thank you. Russ. I never expected in retirement that you'd be growing tomatoes. Russ, do you have anything you want to say? Go ahead, and then we'll take a photo. Go ahead and go over to the microphone there so we get it recorded.
Back in the '70s, I served three terms in the Minnesota House of Representatives in southwestern Minnesota, and I never got near the publicity during those six years as I did over this tomato. So if you want publicity, raise tomatoes.
I don't see our other hero, so I'll try to get her to another meeting when we can honor her then. Thank you.
Russ, if you've got a photo of that you can send in, we'd like to put it on the website, you know?
I think a photo is, there is a photo.
Was there a photo? Was there a photo of the tomato?
Oh, the tomato, sure.
Let's show folks the tomato. You could ask him that question, but what size burger did you put it on? Man, that looks like a good-sized squash. Nicely done, Russ. All right. Well, I'm sorry we can't celebrate Fatune Ismail tonight, but we'll get to that. We'll get her here. We're going to move on now. If that completes our special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, we'll move on now to the public hearings. We had one matter in that category, and the proponent, the applicant, has requested a postponement of this matter until our meeting, let's see, November 15th, 2022. And I think staff's recommending the postponement as well. Is that correct, Director Teague?
That's correct.
All right. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing on Resolution 2022-98 and ordinance number 2022-17, which was a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning and site plan with multiple variances for 6016 Vernon Avenue, that's the Kevin Key site, until the November 15, 2022 city council meeting?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce to adopt the motion as stated. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We received an email this afternoon from the people, the applicant, asking us as a city council to attend a meeting, a private meeting that they're holding. And I guess I just wanted to make a comment that I think that's probably inconsistent with the open meetings law. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm not going to be going for that reason. And I think we ought to have the public hearing here in chambers and not at a private meeting. So I just wanted to put that on the record if I could.
Good. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Matters continued until November 15, 2022. And now back to Director Bennerott.
Thank you for welcoming me back up here. Fatune Ismail is founder of the Somali American Women Action Center, a Minnesota-based support network by and for immigrant and refugee women. She emigrated from Africa in 2005, moved to Minnesota the following year, and later established SAWAC. While her own experience navigating an unfamiliar country, culture, and language helped to shape the organization's mission, Fatune's inspiration comes from her grandmother, who taught other women how to sew. While that's a simple enough gesture on its surface, the lesson had far-reaching implications in Somalia. Sewing proficiency afforded these women an independent source of income and at a time when men dominated Somalia's textile industry. In addition, her grandmother encouraged trainees to prioritize durable and reusable tote bags, suggesting a fiber alternative to plastic bags in drought-stricken Somalia. Sewing for life quickly became one of SAWAC's most important initiatives. More than a dozen seamstresses today work on the production of tote bags alone. Their work amounts to well over 500 tote bags every month. Each is a unique piece of textile art and has the potential to save hundreds and maybe even thousands of single-use plastic bags from landfills. Fatune says, "We are fighting for the climate and elimination of plastic bags, just like my grandmother. We have been climate refugees once, and we won't want to be climate refugees again." The city of Edina thanks Fatune Ismail for her work with SAWAC and protecting the environment in this way. Thank you, Fatune.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you. I am very honored to be here today and, you know, very, very supportive from you guys, you know, honored me this moment and this work. It wasn't only me who did it. I think it was our whole community who was supporting donations, you know, people who wants to volunteer, and also the city trying to help us find any other resource that we can get it. And, you know, there was a whole woman behind me that did the masks for the COVID-19 during the pandemic and also the NMBI challenge, which is the tote bags, to eradicate the plastic bag. It's a whole community working and a whole woman that has kids, need a daycare, and everything that left the kids behind, and sewing this thing to make sure that we have a better environment and better climate in this kind of century that today we're in. So I'm very, very, very supportive, and I'm very glad that I'm here today. Thank you for supporting us.
It sounds nice and good.
Two wonderful celebrations. Thanks to everybody for being here. And thank you, Director Bennerott, for those two great pieces of recognition for people in our town. All right, we completed the public hearing portion of the agenda. We're going to move on to reports and recommendations. And the first matter we have there is a resolution accepting donations, Resolution 2022-99. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-99?
So moved.
Member Pierce moves.
Second.
Member Staunton seconds the adoption of Resolution 2022-99, which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-99, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Under state law, we have to, yeah, motions are carried, motions approved, excuse me. When we accept donations from people in our community or any donation, we have to have a supermajority of the council accept that donation by state law. This reporting period, we had a wonderful gift from Dixon Debold in the amount of $15,000 for 20 spaded conifers that are going to be used, I'm not sure quite where, but really quite a generous gift from Dixon Debold. So thank you very much, Dixon Debold, for that donation of $15,000 for those 20 trees. And then your name will be on the city website. Next, we're going to move on to a series of proposed special assessments that we discussed last meeting. We had public hearings on them. The public hearings were held open, I think, until this past Wednesday, and now it's time to make a decision on whether we're going to impose these assessments or not this evening, and you'll see a series of them coming up. Tom Swenson, our Assistant Director of Parks and Natural Resources, is here to walk us through the various matters. And we're going to start with a weed mowing special assessment request.
So we received no feedback on this one, so we're recommending passing the resolution assessing the five properties that were listed.
Questions on the weed mowing? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-89?
So moved.
Second? Your second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Anderson, to approve Resolution 2022-89, which especially assesses property for, certain properties for weed mowing improvements that were embodied in what is called WD-22. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Next is the tree removal special assessment proposal. Back to Mr. Swenson.
So again, no feedback on this one, but staff does recommend we hold the Kent Avenue property till 2023. Staff wants to review the assessment process and guidelines to the policy and try to do a better job with that $14,000 tree. The other three properties understood the terms and agreed to the city removing them. So there's no issues with the other three. So we're recommending the passage of the resolution minus the Kent Avenue address.
So it's the two on Bush Lake Road and the one on Halifax, you want to cover through resolution this evening?
Correct.
Okay. And the Resolution 2022-91 would assess for those tree removals at 7360 West Bush Lake Road, 7401 Bush Lake Road, and 5405 Halifax Lane. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution on the special assessment for tree removal on those three defined properties?
So moved.
Member Anderson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the resolution on the tree removal assessment on the three designated properties. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-91 as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are on to another assessment that we have every year, which is Aquatic Vegetation Special Assessment, is embodied in improvement number AQ-22. And Director Milner has this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no comments received since the closing of the public hearing. Our Water Resources Manager, Jessica Wilson, presented this to you last time, and we'd recommend approval of Resolution Number 2022-85 for aquatic vegetation.
All right, questions for Director Milner? All right, this covers several different property owners and different bodies of water. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-85, the Aquatic Vegetation Special Assessments Embodied in Improvement Number AQ-22?
So moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the resolution as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Next is the Tree Removal Special Assessment Proposal. Back to Mr. Swenson.
So again, no feedback on this one, but staff does recommend we hold the Kent Avenue property till 2023. Staff wants to review the assessment process and guidelines to the policy and try to do a better job with that $14,000 tree. The other three properties understood the terms and agreed to the city removing them. So there's no issues with the other three. So we're recommending the passage of the resolution minus the Kent Avenue address.
So it's the two on Bush Lake Road and the one on Halifax, you want to cover through resolution this evening?
Correct.
Okay. And the Resolution 2022-91 would assess for those tree removals at 7360 West Bush Lake Road, 7401 Bush Lake Road, and 5405 Halifax Lane. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution on the special assessment for tree removal on those three defined properties?
So moved.
Member Anderson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the resolution on the tree removal assessment on the three designated properties. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-91 as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are on to another assessment that we have every year, which is Aquatic Vegetation Special Assessment, is embodied in improvement number AQ-22. And Director Milner has this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no comments received since the closing of the public hearing. Our Water Resources Manager, Jessica Wilson, presented this to you last time, and we'd recommend approval of Resolution Number 2022-85 for aquatic vegetation.
All right, questions for Director Milner? All right, this covers several different property owners and different bodies of water. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-85, the Aquatic Vegetation Special Assessments Embodied in Improvement Number AQ-22?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the resolution as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated with regard to Resolution 2022-85, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And next, Director Milner has the resolution regarding, proposed resolution and special assessment regarding what we call the Creek Knoll A and B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Special Assessment, improvement number BA-459. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor. We received two additional comments. They were on similar topics, the funding policy and some of the turf questions. So we would recommend approval of this resolution for assessments related to that Creek Knoll Street Reconstruction Project.
Anybody on the council have any questions of Director Milner with regard to this proposed special assessment for this roadway reconstruction project? All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-86, the so-called Creek Knoll A and B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project Assessment, embodied in improvement number BA-459?
So moved.
Member Staunton moves adoption of the resolution as stated. Member Jackson seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion embodied in Resolution Number 2022-86, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And next matter Director Milner has as well is another proposed street reconstruction project assessment. It's the Melody Lake project, which was quite a significant project. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor. We received two additional comments on this one also. One was on the funding policy itself and then the size of the project, which we discussed last time. So staff would recommend approval of Resolution 2022-87 for Melody Lake.
All right, any questions for Director Milner regarding this matter? Both these street reconstruction projects, we've worked on for a couple of years now. So hearing nothing from council, is there a motion from a council member to approve Resolution 2022-87, which is the Melody Lake A and B, Birchcrest C, Grandview A Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Special Assessment, embodied in improvement BA-457?
So moved.
Member Pierce moves. Member Anderson seconds the adoption of the motion as stated with regard to the proposed special assessment on the street reconstruction project for Melody Lake A and B, Birchcrest C, Grandview A Neighborhood. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are on to Resolution 2022-88, which is the 50th and France Special Assessments in that improvement district. Director Milner has this matter, too. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor. At the previous meeting, our facility manager, Derek Otten, presented the assessments for the district. We received no additional comments, and we recommend approval of Resolution 2022-88.
All right, very good. Questions for Director Milner on this proposed assessment? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-88, which is the 50th and France Special Assessments for the properties down there for maintenance of the district? Thank you.
Second.
All right. I like that rhythm. Member Pierce moves. Member Staunton seconds the adoption of Resolution 2022-88, which is the 50th and France Special Assessments. Any further discussion with regard to this matter? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then we've got a certification of delinquent utilities. There are properties in our community where they're behind on their payment of their utility bills, and we deal with this annually as well. Our finance director is available virtually. Director McAndrews, is there anything you wanted to indicate to us that came in in the period since we had the public hearing?
Similar to those that preceded me, we did not receive any public comments on the 651 accounts with balances over $50 for 30 days or more. So staff recommendation is for approval of Resolution 2022, authorizing the certification of delinquent utility charges.
All right. Any council members have questions for Director McAndrews? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-90, as recommended by staff, which would authorize the certification of delinquent utilities embodied in DU-22 to the county?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to adopt the resolution as stated by both the mayor and Director McAndrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Resolution 2022-90 is adopted. And then the next matter Director Teague has, and we are moving away from the special assessments into a matter that we carried over from the prior meeting, and this is involving 727250 France Avenue South. And Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Since it's been a month since this project was originally presented to the council, I thought I'd just give a brief overview of the project and then open it up for your discussion. So this site is located in the greater Southdale District on the west side of France, specifically at the intersection of 72nd and France. Back in 2019, most of you recall, there was a project that was approved for housing and retail and office space, but was never constructed. So the site essentially sits vacant today. There was a 67 and 1/2-foot height restriction put on that project. It was about 300 housing units. What the applicant is proposing this evening is a two-phase development, kind of laid out in the same configuration, breaking the site up into three different blocks. Phase one would include 125,000-square-foot office building with about a 2,200-square-foot coffee shop on the main level that would be parking underneath. Note, on the left-hand side, phase two would be essentially graded landscaping provided along France and along 72nd, though it's not shown here. And it would be green space. Phase two would be a similar size, roughly similar size building, 150 units of housing with 10... with 10,000 square feet of retail space, and again, underground parking. Here's a two-dimensional look at the project. So the north-south drive aisle connecting Gallagher to 72nd. Access to the underground parking comes off of this street. There's a large infiltration basin that would be above ground. That previous project, all the parking was underneath the project as well as the underground storage, which was quite expensive, which led to the project not being built. There's a mature stand of trees along the west lot line. Some of that would be removed, but some is to be, would be retained. This project was reviewed by the planning commission. They did recommend, they are recommending approval on a six to zero vote. One of the conditions that they added, and the applicant has already incorporated that within their plans, is a separation of that north-south drive aisle, a separation of the bike and pedestrian movement. This graphic begins to show that. Next one shows it a little better. So it's a 10-foot shared bike and pedestrian path that runs north-south through the site. There's also pedestrian walkways above the underground parking in this location here. Here's again, a two-dimensional view of that 10-foot path. In accomplishing that, they narrowed the, that drive aisle down to 24 feet. So again, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval, and I wanted to highlight a few of the conditions that are within the resolution. One is that the phase two project needs to include affordable housing within the project. That was a requirement of the previous proposal. Also that that phase two retail or housing needs to have entrances on both 72nd and France. Public art would be provided along the street frontage and the courtyard. The final plans need to comply with the street typologies in the Southdale Design Guidelines. So to show that, this is a rendering, this is France Avenue here. Note that the building, there's no articulation. It's just straight up and down, and the design guidelines require that at the 60-foot height, the building needs to step in 10 feet, and the applicant is agreeable to this condition. So along France, they would meet that street typology by stepping the building in 10 feet above that 60-foot height line. Additionally, so the two items that are highlighted in red would be new conditions that we're suggesting, that the building height for phase two be limited to five stories and 76 feet tall. The applicant has stated a willingness to reduce that to 72 feet. If the council would be willing to, we have that design experience guideline that requires a 20-foot ceiling for the first, for the first floor, they would be willing to reduce that down to 16 feet, and that would reduce the overall height down to 72 feet. So that might be something that the council wants to discuss. And also just adding a condition about those existing trees along the west side of the property, should they not survive the grading that's taking place, they would have to replace those trees, subject to a plan approved by the city forester. I do have a video that they've provided. We did show that a month ago. It's about a minute long. If you'd like to see that, I've got it queued up. Otherwise, we can turn it over to the council for discussion, and the applicant is here as well.
I'd like to see the video. I think we all would.
I think there's sound. It's just music, but you get the idea.
No, we're not showing it because last time we showed it, Facebook took the video down because they didn't think we had the license for the music.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
And with that, we can answer any questions you may have, or I'll turn over to the council.
Questions for Director Teague? It might have come up in people's minds since a month ago. All right. And you've got the applicant here for questions as well, I noticed. Somebody has any questions for the applicant? All right. So no questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. A month ago, we tabled the matter to tonight because we did not have a full complement of council members. And so I think we're ready to have that broader conversation with a full complement here of council members with regard to this proposed project. And I'll turn to Member Jackson. I think you led off last time, I'll let you lead off again.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the first things I learned in law school is that every parcel of land is unique. And I think that's really important to remember on this project. And the story of this parcel of land is elevation and water. And those are the two things that really have to be accounted for in evaluating what's going on. You've got elevation drop in both directions, east-west and north-south. And so, and then you've got historic flooding. So I think this is a good way of handling the change in elevation and also managing that water. Some of the concerns that were raised were about the buffer between the neighborhood and the buildings. And I think a water-holding basin that's part of a park is kind of a nice buffer. And it's a very nice buffer, actually. And one of the Southdale Guidelines is to daylight water, and that's what this basin will do. It will allow the water to come out when it's there, and it'll be dry and filled with natural plantings when it's not there. But I think that's a good way to manage that water. We've got the three different type, street room typologies on France. We've got two rows of trees and the 50-foot setback, or is it 60-foot? The 50-foot setback on France. One of the conditions is to have that step back at 60 feet in height. So I think we've accomplished the France street room typology. You've got between the part A, the part, phase one and phase two. And then this is a story of the elevation, that the elevation is such that it can't be walkable and accessible without having that crisscross of sidewalks, so that you can get through there in a wheelchair with a stroller easily. So the elevation is really an important part of the design here. Furthermore, if it were to be a cut-through street, it really goes to nowhere. So this is a good use of the breakdown into the 200-foot blocks, but instead of having a street go through, we have a pedestrian street. We've got the side streets and the cornelia overlay. So with the cornelia overlay, it talks about having a buffer, as I said, between the buildings on France and the single-family residences to the west. We've got a buffer in terms of this water catch basin. And then also, the height of the building is pulled up towards France and not towards the single-family neighborhood. So the height is as far away as it can be, so to kind of have that feeling of transition. There, one of the things raised is that there wasn't a woo-nurf going along there, but a woo-nurf is where you have to have both cars and people. To me, the big thing about the Southdale Guidelines is creating that walkability. And I really get the sense that, given the change in elevation in both directions, we have to have a few retaining walls there, but to the extent possible to accommodate the elevation, this is as walkable as it can get. And I think that's a really thoughtful design. Therefore, I'll be supporting the project. As far as the 16 feet versus 20 feet on the first floor, I'm going to defer on that. I'm neutral either way. It's fine with me. I think neighbors were concerned about the height. This would take four feet off the height. It's four feet less to heat in the wintertime. But, but if the, if the feeling is that we really need those 20-foot ceilings, I would approve that. But like I said, I'm neutral on that, but overall, I'm going to be voting for this project.
Thank you. Member Jackson and Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to be too repetitive. My comments the last time out were pretty specific. I do appreciate the fact that we're dropping down in height, your proposal. We've gone from 84 to 72, if that's accurate. I just want to mention that the encapsulation impact on the South Cornelia neighborhood is similar. It just is. And I, so I struggle with that. I kind of feel like in another two weeks, we could find the five feet that might take it down to 67. And that is the height of what was approved there before. That was a stretch to get to that height. And the justification for that was that the, the existing building, the medical building that was there was at, if I recall this correctly, was it 64? And I might not be precise, but close. And the idea there was to go to 67 wasn't much of a stretch, and could we do that? And while there was debate, it, finally, we wound up at 67 feet there. We started at 84. There was a pass-through here at 76. I'm not sure where that was, but we passed through there at 76. We're down to 72. I could live with 67, but that's not what's being proposed. The, the setback on Gallagher is inaccurate. And I'm not sure, again, I brought this up two weeks ago. I'm not sure why that's critical. It's, it's part of your proposal, it's part of your plan. So I can't, I've struggled with that. And as we discussed also the last time out, the, the nature of the, of the phasing of the project just raises questions for me for what goes into the future. Initially, we started with no housing proposed and a, and a grocery store. We came back, that was in the sketch plan. We came back at the public hearing with 84-foot height and the grocery store is gone. We've still got the setback issue there. And then the parking becomes a question. So my question the last time out to you was, how did we go from no justification for housing to we think there's going to be housing? Tonight, we're committing to housing, it sounds like, and I assume that that's locked. And, and then the housing component would include affordable housing on-site. That's what I'm hearing. Is that accurate?
Mr. Carlson, yeah, please come up.
Good evening, council members and Councilmember Anderson. Ted Carlson with Orion Investments. Nice to see you all tonight. I want to make clear that it could potentially be housing, it could potentially be hospitality, which, if I may ask, Director Teague carries a very similar code analysis, if that's the right term?
In terms of parking, yes.
So I, I think that our team would lean to one of a combination of the following three: housing, hospitality, and/or retail on phase, what we'd call phase two.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. And so, you know, those, those were the reasons that I, and I continue to struggle with it on that basis. But there's a couple of other items. They've also been brought up in the past, so I don't want to belabor all that. The existing TIP district, that will have to be decertified in order to gain the PUD-16 zoning, or the PUD zoning that you're requesting. But that's just process here. So those are, those are my comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Anderson. Okay. Thank you. Member Staunton.
Well, I, I'm very torn on this project. We, we talked last time. I, I recognized many of the things that Member Anderson has discussed in terms of the height and the transition. My biggest concern is the Western Promenade, which is something that we've worked on since, really, since I've been on the council. We, when, when I came on the council in January of 2015, there was a proposal here, and it was not approved. And we set about a task force to work on creating a district plan, basically Southdale District Plan. That led to the Design Experience Guidelines, and a big part of those Design Experience Guidelines is this Western Promenade, and this is an important piece of that. And so the reason I'm torn is I want, I'm, I'm worried that if we don't get a foothold, we'll never get a foothold on the Western Promenade. And so I'm, there's a part of me that really wants to make this project go so that we can get that connection where we're cutting a path between Gallagher and 72nd. We are already working on something between 70th and 69th. And so you start to take, you start to see the shape of that and start to see how it might take hold. And this pathway, and I had a chance to meet with the development team virtually this week and talk with them a little bit about some of the grade challenges on the site. And while it is not, it is not the woo-nurf that we envisioned in the last project, I do think that it is a connection. And perhaps the woo-nurf from the last project is what made the last project undoable in some ways. And so I'm, I'm inclined with some conditions to be supportive. Those conditions really have to do with screening vegetation along the western side of the parking on phase one and phase two, if that's what ends up being there, so that it's less visible. That could be in the form of hedge or some other parking that screens, or vegetation landscaping that screens the parking. I also think that the, I'm persuaded that the retaining walls are less steep than they were before. But I think that's another thing that we could put some vegetation over those walls to try and make them feel more green. And so those would be conditions that I would be looking to add. And I think it's important to make sure that the types of plantings that are in the retention pond are sufficient so that it doesn't just look like a weed pile when it's empty, because it'll be empty most of the time. And so I think that's a really important piece as we're talking about the buffer here. So, so those are my thoughts, but I'm also anxious to hear from Member Pierce.
Thank you, Member Staunton. Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when I look at this project, if I step back from it, for me, if we were just talking about phase one, and this were 100% developer financed, I think I would be fine with phase one. Now, I do understand the history of the height and things like that, that there was a project that was approved. This one's different, has a different height. But when I think about where it is in the district, and it's not the heart of the commercial district, but it's, it's close enough for me. So it's in the commercial district. And so if I, if I take that view, then what I do is then I step back to what's my closest resident, R1, right? And so when I do that, then I focus on what's going to happen for phase two. And then there's the cul-de-sac that is adjacent to the, the pond that we talked about. And then kind of kitty corner from that is the first single resident that's across, is at Gallagher. And so then I, you know, I stand on the deck in the, with the townhome. And so what I see from there is this pond. And so I asked the question, what can we do? And so what I see from there is this pond, and so I ask the question, what can we do so that, one, the pond can be the visual of that? What can we do to address that? And so the condition that we added on the trees being replaced was one thing that I had asked for. The second would be, in the way the current condition reads, if trees can't be saved, they would be replaced. I would also say, are there things that we can do along that line to kind of further add vegetation around it, if I'm, you know, on the cul-de-sac looking across the pond? I think it's a, it is definitely a community benefit to have this feature, to be able to manage stormwater. And so one of the other questions I asked is, are there things that we can do to specify capacity? Because we know that the flooding issue that we have throughout that area is progressive, so it's going to continue. And so it would be ideal if we can ensure that it has capacity not for the current water challenges, but also for future. And I think we talked about that a little bit. That would be something that our engineering can help address to ensure that, however that is architected, that is architected for the future need, not just current need. So I think that was extremely positive. And then the other piece is the second structure for Phase Two. And there, for me, it was again the height issue. Whether I'm in that cul-de-sac, right, from the cul-de-sac, I think if we do what we've talked about, the view from there is altered by the second phase building, but I think it's less significant. I think the home across Gallagher then becomes my other question. And there, I think having a condition that reduces the height of that building is the ask that I had there. And I think that if we can do that, then I would be comfortable with the proposal across Seventy, what is it?
Seventy-second.
Seventy-second, yes.
Seventy-second.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Yeah, and so those are my, that's my feedback.
Director Teague, this is something I forgot to ask you earlier, but Member Pierce's comments bring it back in my mind. With respect to Phase Two, we've heard Mr. Carlson on behalf of Orion say tonight, you know, he's not, it looks like multifamily housing, and we've got some conditions imposed. But he talked about a couple of other possibilities, too. When we get to Phase Two, if this were approved tonight, what does he have to come back for approval on?
Yes, it would be a site plan review, so it'd be full public hearings with Planning Commission and City Council.
Yeah. So to the extent we wanted to address height issues or some of the other issues that people have expressed a concern about, this isn't the last opportunity for that. It's going to have to be a full-blown public process around Phase Two.
That's correct. It's probably a good idea to set some parameters, though, around that. So we could limit height now. They can always make an argument for taller or shorter. But I think if we establish some parameters for Phase Two, it would be helpful also.
Okay. And Member Pierce, for clarification, on the added restrictions, number twenty-one was your idea, which I think is an excellent one. And was twenty your idea as well, that reduction from seventy-six to seventy-two and then allow the first floor to reduce to sixteen-foot ceiling heights? Was that?
Yes.
Okay. Was that your idea on the height reduction?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, yes. I think the way, though, we got to the height reduction was represented by the developer in terms of changing the height of the first floor.
Right.
To reach that height.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sitting here listening to everybody and then thinking of, Member Sutton was just fresh to the council when this matter came up, and it was, I think it was actually Member Sutton who suggested, hey, wait a minute, this is just the first of many projects we're going to see out here in the Southdale District. And I think he was really the impetus, in my mind at least, to the idea of putting in place some guiding principles for the Southdale District. And so for that big idea, I thank you. And it's really been beneficial, I think, to our entire town, as we've used those guiding principles in a lot broader way than just in the Southdale District. And so we went through a few iterations out there. We approved one that had a lot of neighborhood opposition, and this one, to me, has been generally accepted. I've seen hardly any correspondence from the neighborhood on this project. I think they're really comfortable with what the developer is proposing. So though there may be a single-family home a thousand feet away, and I'm thinking about Steve Brown, who used to live on Bristol Court, who was all in favor of the project, I think it did get approved, or maybe even the first one, that was a six-story apartment building, if I remember correctly. I think there's a sufficient buffer there for that. The management of water is really a big deal, as Member Jackson points out, because this property at Seventy-two-hundred collects water from about a dozen properties. So I've always felt like the city had a significant role in that. I mean, why should that property owner take that entire burden? And to the extent that water may be progressive in its nature in terms of us seeing more moisture coming. At one time, we had talked about some mechanism for piping underneath Seventy-second, I think, into that space, there's a ditch back there, and we were going to do something there as well. So that might be something we take a look at in conjunction with Phase Two. But I, in a Wunorf idea, I always liked the idea of that Western Promenade, but to me, that didn't conjure up a Wunorf necessarily, where people and cars share the same roadway. I actually like the separation of people from traffic here, and you've got two ways to do it. You've got a little elevated walkway above that retaining wall that Member Sutton referred to, and then you've got that wide walkway on the west side adjacent to the, I'll call it, this giant rain garden or pond, if you will, that's going to have water in it from time to time. So the idea of no Wunorf is okay with me. I like the separation of people from traffic. The general acceptance from the Cornelia neighborhood, I think, is really important. And to my recollection, it's over a thousand feet from the closest single-family home. And I do think we have a toehold on that sort of Western Promenade notion by having the kind of design that we have here with a ten-foot-wide walkway and then people separated from traffic. And even the street itself, the way it's done on the elevations, it looks like pavers. And so I think that alone will probably slow traffic, just by use of the material that you intend to use for the hardscape, for the roadbed. The height, whether it's Seventy-two-fifty or Seventy-two-hundred, I'm comfortable with. I think that the more important thing is to get that sixty-foot setback right on Phase Two, and then that fifty-foot setback for establishing what happens along France Avenue in the future. You know, this, when you think about this, it's probably a thirty-year view of what's going to happen on France Avenue. All of us are going to be long gone, but I think this is a chance to really get that right. And so I think this is a really, really good project, and maybe it's not perfect, but I don't want to kill off the really, really good in search of the perfect. And so I'm going to favor, I'm going to vote in favor of it as well. I think it's, seeing that building coming down and thinking about what might be there on a key block in our community, I think you've done a great job, especially on Seventy-two-fifty, and I expect to see something comparable when you come back on Phase Two on Seventy-two-hundred. I think we'll see something pretty special there, too. So thank you for your effort on that. So I'm going to favor it, too. Now, let's go back to what Member Sutton was talking about. He was talking about some screening of parking and also vegetation on the retaining walls or in front of the retaining wall that might grow up in front of the retaining wall. And then rain garden vegetation was a concern, the quality of that vegetation. I think I know exactly what he's thinking about, and that's what it looks like over at Public Works, which I can never decide, is that wildflowers or is that wild weeds? I, you know, it never looks good to me. So I get all of that. I think it should really look good in its natural state when it doesn't have water in it and be able to survive the water that comes into it and whatever springs back. It looks really terrific there. So what about the screening of the parking, Member Sutton? Would you explain which parking you're talking about, and then we can maybe add another condition here?
So I'm talking about the parking, the surface parking on the west side of the building.
Makes sense to you folks, so?
To the east of the drive aisle and that. And I think you want that to be tall enough to screen the vehicles as you're looking from the west.
Okay. Landscape screening of parking on west side, sufficient in height to block the view of the cars, parked cars? Is that what you meant?
Yeah. And then what I have in mind for the retaining walls is more of a, almost vines that may crawl down, you know, to kind of cover that. I don't know if you?
Or grow up. Yes. Mr. Carlson, please.
Thank you. We're agreeable with both conditions, and I believe what you, Councilmember Sutton, may be referencing is existing vine and growth on the existing Cedars wall, something similar?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yep.
So it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to take up some of that space that's for travel. I'm looking for it to cover the concrete.
Beautification.
Right.
Yep.
And then the nature of the plantings within the retaining pond needs to be such that they're?
So how do we go about, who do we put in charge of that, from a city standpoint, to get compliance?
Agreeable, and frankly, completely aligned on making sure that the vegetation and infiltration basin is beautified and/or maintained. Maybe we won't follow what Public Works is doing, but, you know, we can work with Watershed District and others with Terriott Confluence as our landscape architect to make sure we get it right. And I think that we, on our other projects, continually work with the city and staff to make sure that those are maintained. And I do believe also that with the Watershed District, that we do have to provide an access easement and a maintenance agreement that is recorded within Hennepin County for those infiltration basins. And Director Miller, if I may, is that accurate?
That is. Okay. Okay, so I've got maybe the rough outline of Condition Twenty-two, which would be landscape screening of the parking lot on the west side of the project in Phase One, sufficient in height to block the view of the cars. Retaining wall vegetation that screens the retaining wall, and then rain garden vegetation sufficient in nature and quality to satisfy the city staff.
Yeah.
Is that a, do you have a preferred language on that?
City manager is designated, and we'll figure out who that's going to be.
I can't think of anybody better to figure out rain garden planning than you.
It would not be me, but I can sure figure out somebody that can do that kind of thing.
I didn't know it was a talent you had, but okay.
It's definitely not. I'll figure out who'd do it.
Okay. That seems satisfactory, Member Sutton. All right. Then we have those other two suggested conditions, and I take it, Mr. Carlson, you're satisfied with those two, Number Twenty and Number Twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay.
And then on the height, I guess I didn't weigh in on the height of the first floor. I think it's probably more important to the neighborhood to the west to bring it down at the top than it is to maintain the twenty feet that the Design Experience Guidelines call for, so. And just so I'm clear, Mr. Carlson, the Seventy-two is to the, to the, I don't know what you call it?
North.
The apparatus on the top of the building, is that? It's not to the first, I'm not doing a very good job of describing.
Yeah, I can jump in. It's to the roof line. So there is mechanical equipment that would go above that.
Ah, okay.
But this measurement would be?
So the eighty-four is to the roof line?
Correct.
Okay.
No, no, no. What they're suggesting is to the roof line, their maximum would be either seventy-six or seventy-two to the roof line.
To the roof line.
Yes.
So there would be some stuff above that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to modify Number Twenty to read the building height to the roof line for Phase Two. She'll be limited to five stories and seventy-two feet in height with a sixteen-foot height limitation on the first floor.
A requirement, I guess.
A requirement, better way to put it. I capture everything?
Yep.
Okay. Now, let's go back with those conditions potentially added and ask if there is a motion from a council member to approve Zoning Ordinance Amendment embodied in resolution. We're going to? Did you have, you want to go to discussion?
If you don't mind.
We can do that after we have a motion and a second, or do you want to say something?
Sure.
Okay. Let's do the motion, and then we'll go to discussion. Unless there was something in terms of one of those restrictions that changed your mind?
No.
Okay. All right, let's go to Resolution Twenty-two-two-dash-eighty-one as modified. Is there a motion to approve the Zoning Ordinance Amendment and revise overall development plan and site plan review for Seventy-two-fifty and Seventy-two-hundred France Avenue with the addition of Restrictions Twenty-one through Twenty-two and Twenty, Twenty-two and Twenty-two as created this evening?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Now a discussion.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention that, however this vote goes tonight, I appreciate your improving the project because it's a dramatically improved presentation from the last one. And so I see this as progressive in terms of your thinking about it, and I think that this is a far better proposal, and I appreciate your effort and work in that.
Okay. So the motion is to approve Resolution Twenty-two-dash, oh, sorry.
Yeah, one of the things I forgot to mention is that this is going to be a commercial office building, and it's bringing in some really high-paying jobs into our city. I think the number is about 500 jobs, and it's a $50 million project. So I think this is really good for the economic health of our city, and I just wanted to get that on the record.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, on the verge of maybe some financial challenges they had for the country. You know, to have people employed and working and building something is really critically important to our economy. So this, according to Director Teague, is a motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty-two-two-dash-eighty-one and grant first reading of Zoning Ordinance Number Twenty-two-two-dash-thirteen, with the resolution modified as shown in the document that we've been provided with respect to the addition of Restrictions Twenty, Twenty-one, and Twenty-two as previously articulated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained?
Yes.
All right. No nays, one abstention. All right, thank you. All right.
On behalf of our project team, ESG Adolphen Peterson and Drew and I at Orion, thank you for your time tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Thank you. Thank you, developer team, for being here this evening. All right, and now the last matter in front of us this evening in the action portion of the agenda is Item J, which is a decision regarding a certificate of appropriateness appeal on Forty-six Thirty-three Arden Avenue. We heard testimony at the public hearing last meeting. And now tonight, we've got Emily Bodicker, our Assistant City Planner, back to kind of bring us up to speed and remind us of what our task is tonight. So Ms. Bodicker, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, councils asked to act on the appeal of a certificate of appropriateness at Forty-six Thirty-three Arden Avenue. City Council held the in-person public hearing on October sixth, and comments and Better Together were closed on October tenth at noon. The comments that were received were included in your packet tonight. A certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of an existing attached garage, the construction of a new detached garage, a second-floor addition, changes to the existing dormer, and changes to the existing front porch was approved by the Heritage Preservation Commission on April thirteenth of 2021. The certificate of appropriateness that was approved listed the existing brick as a building material, and the applicant was going to reuse some of that existing brick that was removed on the backside of the building to use as the building material for the new detached garage. A building permit for the renovation and the construction of the new garage was issued October eighteenth of 2021. Staff was then notified via com- Staff was then notified via complaint in November that the existing brick on the home was removed. When staff contacted the builder, he noted that the existing brick was not salvageable. It was crumbling and it couldn't be reused. So he informed staff that he would replace the brick with a similar brick material. And at that time, he was informed he would need to have, take the new building material back to the HPC for their review. A stop work order was issued May 17th of 2022 after staff went out to the site after complaints were received about the windows being open and the house was exposed to the elements. With that stop work order, the contractor had permission to install house wrap to protect the sheathing. And the stop work order noted that all windows either needed to be kept closed or kept weather tight. They were notified again that the project needed to go back to the HPC for the review of their building materials. The builder submitted plans for the July 2022 HPC meeting for an amendment to the approved COA. The builder's proposed building material, tundra brick, was submitted to the HPC, and the submittal also included proposed elevations that included the addition of a dormer window. After discussion, the item was continued to the August HPC agenda. The Heritage Preservation Commission wanted to see additional material options that they felt were more in line with the Secretary of the Interior Standards Rehabilitation and the Country Club Plan of Treatment. At that time, HPC also noted that the, there were additional changes that were not called out on those elevations and asked the builder to explain those changes and why they were needed. At the August HPC meeting, the applicant submitted building material options, three in total. Two of those were full brick options and one was a brick veneer option. The Heritage Preservation Commission discussed and approved Option 2, which was modular winter mist, which was a full brick material. And they felt that that best met the plan of treatment and the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. The Heritage Preservation Commission discussed and denied changes to the facade because they felt that there was not sufficient information to prove why the dormer had to be larger, and they didn't feel that the changes to the windows and the dormer felt proportionate. Tonight, the applicant's appeal request is to the Heritage Preservation Commission's approval of the full brick building material option, which was Option 2, and the denial of the changes to the front facade. And with that, I can take any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Yeah, thanks for that succinct presentation. Let me, I think Member Stotan has a question for you, others may as well.
Before this project started, was this a contributing structure?
It was built between 1924 and 1944, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Emily? All right. Thank you, stand by. Oh, go ahead, Member Stotan.
Is it a contributing structure today?
Uh, excuse me, what?
Is it a contributing structure today?
Um, hard to tell it's under construction, so yes, it would still, it's still built between that period of time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We had the public hearing on this a couple of weeks ago, and I'm going to turn now to Councilmember Pierce to lead off the discussion.
Question, can, can you just confirm once again the, the ask clearly here?
Yes. So the applicant's request was for the Heritage Pres, they want to, they are appealing the decision of the Heritage Preservation Commission. And the decision that the Heritage Preservation Commission was that they approved the building material Option 2, and they denied the changes to the front-facing facade.
Thank you. If you could just leave that slide up?
This slide?
Yes, please.
Yep.
I, so just being extremely transparent here, I, I, I guess I'd say it this way, I'm disappointed that this would come to the council. If our construct is that we are supporting our HPC to govern, look at these particular issues, make recommendations if they have the, loosely I'd say, decision rights, the approval rights, that I can say, then I think we have, have given them that authority. So that's the, just point blank, that's the first thing I would say. Secondly, it's very irritating to me that we could have a developer, for whatever reason, and, and I actually think we're going to have another project come before us at some point in November. So a developer has every opportunity to understand what the policy is, what the process is, and what the consequences are. And so I personally don't think any of this was not understood. And so from my perspective, I just don't think that we can have a, we can allow developers to use processes, techniques to get around these types of, of issues and challenges. And so frankly, I'm disappointed that it has gotten to this, 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 it has gotten to this point. I support the recommendation of the HPC. And then I would, would go further to say, if there are challenges in the way that this property was, was purchased, like, that's not our role to address that. It's very much a simple process before a, for me as a resident, if I see property that I want to purchase, to do my due diligence and understand what the consequences are, what I'm going to be able to do, what I'm not going to be able to do. And I think we have to abide by that. If we don't want to abide by that, then frankly, there's other properties that a resident can choose to go, go purchase. And the last thing I would say, if a developer gets stuck with a situation like this, knowing that this is the process, this is the commission, this is the purpose of that commission, then they take the risk. And so I fully support the HPC recommendation.
Thank you. I'm going to now turn to Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I looked into this as carefully as I can and really used city code as the basis for coming to a conclusion. And so I want to be specific here and, and share with you what I found. And that is that city code under Division 5, Section 2-186 refers to the city's heritage resource preservation policies that are adopted by the council, which establishes goals, priorities, and integrates heritage preservation with other data. It also establishes the Heritage Preservation Commission as the advisory commission and recognizes the act or process of applying measures to sustain existing farm, structure, integrity, and material of a heritage resource. Section 2187 authorizes the commission to develop and maintain a comprehensive plan for heritage resource preservation to ensure the community development policies and decisions respect the city's heritage and promote stewardship of heritage resources. Further, in 187, references the review of permit applications and the responsibility of the commission to make recommendations to the city planner with respect to issuance of certificates of appropriateness. The commission, as a result of that authority, may work within the very narrow architectural confines of historical resource preservation and restoration. There is a reference to the Secretary of the Interior. The Secretary of Interior's guidance that deteriorated features should be, should be repaired rather than replaced provides latitude for replacement policy. In this case, when repair was not possible, the applicant presented a brick replacement selection, which was approved by the HPC, but is appealing that guidance to use a product which was not deemed appropriate by the HRC when considering the historic designation of both the property and the district. The commission holds the authority to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I concur with my other members who have spoken so eloquently, thank you. I think the standard here is whether the Historic Preservation Commission was in clear error. I don't think that was met. I think that they were correct in their decisions. It's important to remember that people move to the Country Club District because of its historic nature, and it's, it's really important to maintain that. That is the value of the district. So as was repeated in the presentation, the standard is to be historic, not to be pretty. And I think that there was a very thoughtful process in going through this. I don't find that the Historic Preservation Commission was in error, therefore I'll be voting to deny the appeal.
Thank you. Member Stotan?
So I, I echo a lot of the comments of my colleagues that made, but there's one additional note that I want to add, and that is that it's historic preservation, not historic replication. And I think when, when we have basically taken everything down on a building and then purport to put up some replica of what it was supposed to look like back then, that's in effect demolishing it and starting over. And I don't think it will be contributing when you're done. And so I, I can't, I, I think, Mr. Bouson, when, when you made a presentation at the last meeting, and I asked you if it would be okay to put pink siding on the building, you didn't think that was okay, but your attorney thought that was okay. And I think the reason you didn't think it was okay is because you thought that your goal is to make it look like it used to look, not to preserve what it used to be. And, and I think that's at the crux of our problem here. And if we, if we take this to its logical conclusion, there won't be any contributing structures in the Country Club neighborhood any longer because they'll all be just cardboard cutouts of what it used to be like. And that's not what the statute, what the ordinance was designed to do. So I will vote to uphold the HPC's ruling and deny the appeal.
Thank you, Member Stotan. I join my colleagues in their well-expressed opinions as to the basis for upholding the Heritage Preservation Commission action. I think we've had, you know, the attorney for the, Mr. Bouson and Great Neighborhood Homes point out what he thought were some inconsistencies in the code and the plan of treatment. And I think some of our own Heritage Preservation Board members have pointed that out as well. And that's something we need to fix, to the extent that there is any inconsistency or conflicting language within the code and the plan of treatment regarding when a permit's required, then we should fix that. But I don't think that's, that's the issue here. I didn't, I didn't see or hear the developer arguing that the Heritage Preservation Board acted improperly when he gave him one of three choices on brick, and they chose, they chose a brick and told him he could use that particular brick, which achieved the historic goals of, the goals of preserving as much history on this house as possible. I've got a little bit more difficulty with the turn down on, on the window, that one small window after five windows were approved, but I still think, in its entirety, I think the Heritage Preservation Commission acted appropriately. And when they told the builder he could use one of the three options for replacement brick that he had proposed, and I think that everything they did was consistent with what we want to see happening at the Preservation Commission, and to the extent we need to be clearer about what is to be done from a historic preservation standpoint, then let's, let's fix any issues that we have. But this is the first time we've had a problem in all the years since that Historic Preservation District was created that has, has been brought to light and really had a sort of laser focus on it. And it was something that at least one of our members of the Heritage Preservation Commission predicted. But nonetheless, I join my colleagues in supporting the Heritage Preservation Commission decision and deny the request for an amended certificate of appropriateness. So is there a motion to deny the request for an amended certificate of appropriateness?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second to deny the amended certificate of appropriateness for building materials and front facade of 4633 Arden Avenue. Any doubt, any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carried. Thank you, everybody. And that concludes the work of the council this evening in terms of its action items. Do we have any correspondents come in that we need to be mindful of? All right. And the manager's comments, did you have any thing you wanted to bring us up to date on relative to quarterly business reports?
I, I do have a few things, Your Honor. First, just to note, I, I mentioned this at the HRA meeting this past week, but I'll mention it here too. We are working on your calendar, your meeting calendar for 2023. I anticipate we'll bring that in at the first meeting in November and share that with you. And that gives you a little bit of time to give us some feedback on it if you want to. Work plans are being reviewed and, and from boards and commissions and getting ready for a presentation to you at the November 1st council work session. So you can expect that then. At the December 6th work session, that is later in the council meeting that night, you will be asked to approve the 2023 through 2028 capital improvement plan and also our, our final budget and levy positions for 2023 as well. So those are teed up for, for that night. Well, you'll host a public hearing on it on that night and perhaps approve it that night or approve it on December 20th. Finally, we've really had some outstanding development numbers this past year. In 2020, in 2018, we had a total new construction, permitted new construction that year of $343 million. That was a record for us then. In 2020, we set a new record at $357 million for a year. In 2022, as of three quarters, so we still have the fourth quarter to go, we were at $368 million. So those three years in themselves, a billion dollars of new development in the city. And three quarters, a fourth quarter, may not seem like it should have a lot of development activity, but oftentimes does as developers try to get a building permit for something that's going to cost, you know, 3% more if they do it in January. So we often get a, kind of a year-end flood of, of building permit applications. So that number could be 400 million at the end of the year. And one note, one final note on 7200, 7250 France. Yeah, and there is just a pile of rubble out there now. The 7250 is completely gone. 72, 7200 at noon today was about half gone. So we have, we've been pleased with the developer in doing what he said he was going to do with regards to the removal of those buildings. That's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Neil. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things. One is about, I misspoke earlier about the, the public hearing that was delayed. We, it did say only invite two people to the meeting, but I just want to say that we meet with people all the time, with neighborhoods all the time, with people with proposals. And it just, it just made me uncomfortable to think about being invited and being asked to opine on something that is pretty contentious. And I, I think I'm just more comfortable in the public hearing setting. On the other hand, I just want to do a shout out to our Heritage Preservation Commission. They are working so hard on this, and all of our boards and commissions work so hard. This city is just so filled with people who are willing to give their time and their effort to the community. And we're, it's a richness, it's a, it's a benefit that is hard to put words on, but it really makes a tremendous difference. And I want to thank them again for all the hard work that they put in. It takes a lot of hours, and, and all of our boards and commissions, I want to thank them too. So Fartoon, who we, Ismail, who we honor this evening, she also serves on the HRC. We've just got so much talent, and I'm really grateful for it. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Stotan?
Just kind of a follow-up to Member Jackson's point. I, I want to, I want to note after watching the Planning Commission meeting, and obviously this is going to come back to us in the future on this Vernon Avenue thing, but I applaud the applicant for taking a pause to try and confer further with the neighbors, and I think that's a constructive thing. And I think they're trying, they're trying to figure out the right answer, and, and they're trying to listen, and I think that's, that's laudable. So I, I encourage the, all of the folks, I see a couple of folks here who were here at the Planning Commission meeting, and I encourage them to have a good dialogue with that applicant and vice versa. And I look forward to hearing more about that. Then I wanted to comment on. Then I wanted to comment on the hometown heroes. Jennifer, that is just such great stuff, I want to cry every time we have the hometown hero. And, and it's reminiscent of, you know, what's the Margaret Mead line about, you know? I'm going to butcher it, but it's, you know, the point is that people, individuals taking small steps can really change the world. And, and we saw a couple of those tonight. And Jennifer, I give you kudos for helping us recognize those small steps. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. And on to Member Pierce.
Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things from me. Yesterday, I think it was yesterday, yeah, yesterday, I have attended a roundtable at the request of the League of Minnesota Cities. It was a roundtable on the Infrastructure Act and the Inflation Reduction Act, held up in Little Canada. We had several of the state agencies' heads there, we had somebody from the governor's office there, and then the two big city mayors, me representing kind of suburban mayors, and then two mayors from Greater Minnesota, from Marshall and Thief River Falls, and Bob Burns from Marshall and Brian Holmer from Thief River Falls. And we had this great discussion about how cities can start to think about how we're going to work with the state and vice versa on the, on the potential grant opportunities that are going to be coming forward with respect to the Infrastructure Act and the Inflation Reduction Act. And we just need to be ready for it. And one of the things I suggested was something that we did after the ARPA money came out, was that, you know, Greater MSP set up a hub, a federal hub, that showed how cities were using their ARPA money so other cities could get ideas, and then also came up with ideas about how the federal money coming downstream could be, could be analyzed, and then also applications could be made for some of that, some of those grant opportunities. But most, every one of these requires some kind of matching fund situation. So we've got to have a strategy in terms of going to the legislature to get, I think, basically a pot of money. And then I think the state should set up a funding hub so that everybody knows what's going on in the state, and they ought to, they ought to not bury it in the Commerce Department or the, or MPCA, or, you know, somewhere else, or MINDOT. It ought to be its own hub, its own website, and, and be really effective. So I think everybody left thinking that this was really a great opportunity. The third opportunity is around the CHIPS Act. And many folks on this dais know Surya Iyer, who was on the, one of the early members of our Energy and Environment Commission, who happens to run Polar Industries, which is a semiconductor manufacturing business in, in Bloomington. And we met yesterday because Congress passed a couple of months ago this CHIPS Act that has fifty-six billion dollars in it, twenty-nine billion of which is for semiconductor business expansion in the United States. You know, addressing issues of supply chain, addressing issues of national security. Let's bring these folks home, and let's help them expand their businesses, and let's give them grant money to do it, but there's going to be some matching money involved, and the state's going to have to come up with a theory on how we're going to, we're going to do that. So between the governor's office and the state legislature, we need to start working on these things. So I think cities all over Minnesota are going to have a role here to play as we try to figure out how we can work together to try to get as much for Minnesota as we can, as we can achieve out of, out of all three of these acts and really help, in particular, I think, I get enthusiastic about the chip industry because Surya said that we are so well situated here in Minnesota to expand the semiconductor manufacturing business because it requires a lot of water, and we're home to a lot of water, and it requires cheap electricity, and we're home to cheap electricity in relative terms, too. So some really great things to think about that could help build our metropolitan economy, but our state economy, too, to the, to the jobs point that folks were making, that you were making earlier, Member Jackson, about the number of jobs we're going to have down on France Avenue. And then I did an interview with some tobacco-free folks that were doing some interviews with people at, city councils that had passed, you know, tobacco-free resolutions over time. And then on, was that last Wednesday, we had the Energy Efficiency Breakfast over in St. Louis Park. Grace Hancock did a great job, along with us, the Sustainability Coordinator for St. Louis Park, in getting the business community over there. I think it's the start of something that happened when you were, Carolyn, were on the Energy and Environment Commission, started getting businesses engaged and thinking about how they were going to make their buildings more energy efficient. And this was a good start at sort of a joint effort between our two communities and our business communities. So that's it for me. Did it cause anybody else to have any further thoughts about things? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Member Stottin moves you adjourn. Member Jackson, second, sat motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Stand adjourned.